Good District Regular Board of Education Meeting, February 11, 2020, to order. May I please have a motion to -- is there anything to report first from closed? Sorry, Mrs. Nair, will you please lead us in the flag salute, please? No, to lead us in the flag salute, yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, I need a motion first. Okay.
Yeah, and then you can change it.
So, I may, I need a, did you want to announce anything when closed?
I will.
Okay. So, I need a motion, please, to approve the agenda.
We approve the agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Second, I'd like to, I'd like to first make a motion to see if we can rearrange some items on the agenda, please. I'd like to rearrange items 12C and 12D to move up and move 12A to rearrange them. So, we'll start with under 12, we'll do the, we'll do item 12C first, 12D second, and then last will be 12A. Is, okay. So, all those in favor? I'm sorry, Mrs. Marcus, so under section 12 of the agenda, what I'd like to do is, I would like to move section, let's see, 12C and 12D above to the top in that order?
Right now?
No, just when we get to section 12. We're going to begin with section 12C, then we'll go to 12D, then we will do 12A, and then 12B. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or, no? Okay, thank you, 5-0. Dr. Bregge, you have a report from closed session, please?
In closed session, the board took action to notify the temporary certificated employees identified by employee WD9420574, and that the employees will be released from the temporary contracts effective at the end of the 2019-2020 school year and non-reelected for the 2020-2021 school year, and directed the superintendent or designated to send out appropriate legal notices. And in closed session, the board took action to issue notices of non-relection to probationary certificated employees identified by employee WZ7601584, MJ7107570, KA3175873, GA1814325, and FG5044831 pursuant to the Education Code, Section 44929.21B, effective at the end of the 1920 school year, and directed by the superintendent or designated to send out appropriate legal notices. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan, Dr. Bregge. We're going to now go to public comment. I have two speakers who've requested to address the board. We will begin with Mrs. Colleen Nair. I'm sorry, I have three, but it seems that Mrs. Smith has, okay, I'll call you up right now. Please.
I'd like to thank the board, we now are a total of five after a long absence, and it's really great to have them all there at the meetings. They asked me to address you and regarding, and I brought to you a copy of our minutes, and I'm going to read from minutes verbatim, so I get it the way the committee members would like it to be stated. It's regarding the Gatsby 75, and it's the trust account. They strongly recommend by the, the Finance Committee strongly recommends that the Board of Education set the discount rate no greater than 5%, and that they review the discount rate annually. The Finance Committee also recommends that the Board of Education continue to make the 2% contribution. This recommendation is predicated on the assumption that the board will continue to contribute 2% over and above the pay as you go to the OPEB trust. We feel that it's a very important responsibility, and one of the concerns of the committee is that we don't, we're concerned that future boards might be able to let this go by, and we think it's too important, so we're gonna, we've put it in our minutes, we're going to remind you annually. The other issue that we're going to be looking at, and we've requested a copy of the demographic report that was made to the board, we feel that the demographics influence the finance of the district greatly in the future, so we've asked for a copy of that for future study. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you so much, Colleen. Okay, moving on, Mr. Ethan Smith, and I understand that Mrs. Smith has ceded some of her time. Thank you.
President Hacker, members of the board. At the beginning of this school year, I came to you, and I stated that I'm here to work for BHEA as the BHEA president, but that I was also here to work with you. Since that time, your negotiations team has painted you into a corner, and you've had to vote for a calendar that four of the five of you have publicly stated you are against. You asked BHEA to reopen bargaining so that you could achieve the calendar that you apparently wanted all along. BHEA agreed. We said we would work with you. As part of that bargain, BHEA was allowed to and did bring up the issue of class size for the youngest children in Beverly Hills in grades TK through 3. We asked you to consider that class sizes of 29 to 1 are too large, and if contract language is not changed, there's a very real chance that those classes will increase to 29 to 1. We asked you to work with us. Your bargaining team's response was to again demand no change in the 29 to 1 contract language for class sizes TK 3. What's more, the district sent out an email to all of BHUSD and Beverly Hills stating that nothing could be farther from the truth that BHUSD is seeking for class sizes at 29 to 1 when, in fact, those were the very numbers with which we were presented. The next step your bargaining team took was to state that the board is happy with the status quo, and that you did not care to negotiate any further. That status quo means keeping the calendar you don't like, and more importantly, keeping the contract language that states that class sizes TK through 3 shall be, and I'm quoting the contract here, 29 to 1. Despite being so rudely shut down, on January 13, I reached out on a personal level to board members. Finally, on February 7, last Friday, we had a conversation. At that meeting, I was told there would be no movement from the district on class sizes TK through 3 decreasing from 29 to 1. Again, this despite the district statement that nothing could be farther from the truth. I was told BHEA should just trust the board would never raise class sizes from the board policy of 23 to 1, that we should just pull the calendar, give you what you want, and not ask for something we know is better for students in return. I was then told on a Friday before a three-day weekend, I had until today to give you BHEA's The definition of bargaining is "an agreement between parties settling on what each shall give and take, or perform and receive in a transaction." It seems, however, you're more interested with that other definition of bargaining, which is to get BHEA to part with something after negotiation but get little or nothing in return. Well, nothing but our trust in you that class sizes will not increase. We first tried to work with your bargaining team, did not bargain your desires, and you got a calendar you don't want. We then tried to work with your cabinet, and they told us in the community lies about your intentions. Finally, I tried to work on a personal level with board members. I was given a low priority for a meeting, an ultimatum, and an impossible deadline. I'm here tonight to offer one last chance to talk, not just about this calendar, but about the next three as well. I'm here to offer a last chance for you to do what is right for the students of Beverly Hills. You have fears about lower class sizes. Why not work with us to find solutions to those instead of refusing to talk? I'm here to say again, I'm here to work with you, despite the way in which you, your bargaining team, and your cabinet have all refused through your actions to reciprocate. If there is truly nothing left to be said, however, I will close by simply saying in advance, thank you for the long Thanksgiving weekend.
Thank you. We're going to move on to AYSO presentation, Mr. Grossman. Do you want to introduce?
Sure.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you very much. Distinguished members of the board, members of the staff of the school district, distinguished members of the board, members of the staff of the school district, thank you for having us here this evening. I'm joined this evening by Jeff Pop, one of my predecessors as regional commissioner, and still a member of our board. Those of you who may not know or recall, three years ago, because of our shared commitment with the school district to support youth sports here in our community, AYSO agreed to donate $350,000 to the school district. We gave an initial $250,000 and pledged to give $20,000 for each year for the next five years after that. So, in accordance with that agreement, I have here with me today to present to you actually two checks. We had calendaring issues trying to get here last year, so I've got last year's check for $20,000 here, as well as this year's check for $20,000 that we'd like to present again as part of our shared commitment to support youth sports here in the community, and most importantly, to provide a way for children here to play games that they enjoy with friends and hopefully learn life lessons along the way. So, thank you for helping us in supporting that mission.
Thank you.
I want to say thank you for the partnership, thank you for the support, and for being here tonight. Thank you.
President Hacker.
Yes, I am.
Great, before they change their mind.
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure.
You're welcome.
Can we get a picture here? Do you want to take a picture with the board? Will you come with us?
However, sure.
This is Marcus. Do you want to come over here?
Sure. For 40, I will. 20, I wasn't going to go.
Actually, my grandchildren play AYSO.
We're glad to have you.
Thank you for being here.
My son is also going to play. Better yet, right?
I'll go on that side.
I used to do it.
Do you want to come in the middle?
Hello, Jeff. Good to see you. How's the family?
Pretty good. How are yours?
Thomas, Mike, and Marcus.
One, two, three.
Thank you very much.
No problem, our pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you for continuing.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to get a, okay, may I make a, may I please have a motion from someone at first?
The consent calendar.
Thank you. I have a second?
I have pulling, I'm pulling.
Nine C, any others?
Nine B1.
Nine B1.
Nine C and nine F.
Okay, so we, do I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays or opposition? No? Okay, 5-0. Who pulled nine B1?
I did. I'll make a motion to approve the certificated personnel report.
I second it.
Thank you. My question, Dr. Bregge, hopefully you can answer it. What criteria are we currently using for substitute teachers? Is it only the C best, or do we require anything else from the substitutes we hire?
You're absolutely right about the C best. Also, we do have that you need a bachelor's degree, and then also the interview. So, those three components are what we use when we hire our substitute teachers.
Are there any elements that we look for in regards to classroom management? I know we're short on subs. I know it's hard to get subs, and I know we're, we're, we need them. I've heard some things in the community from my own children who have had subs that sometimes the subs are not working out well. And I, and most of it has to do with classroom management more than anything else. When teachers leave solid lesson plans, that's really all that's left for a sub to kind of get a hold of, is how the class behaves. So, I'm just wondering, is there any, do we give our substitute teachers training in classroom management? If we don't, should we think about it? Because it's something that, we do have subs on all of our campuses every day, and it's something that affects, directly affects child's ability to learn and comprehend when a class is out of control.
So, I think it's a, you know, it's a very important partnership that we have with our substitute teachers, and unfortunately, the way it is now, I think it really depends on the actual substitute teacher. If somebody is, somebody that substitutes on a regular basis, they seem to get to know the lay of the land better than somebody who's coming in maybe one or two times. And what you bring up is a good point, because it's been inconsistent. So, this summer, we're going to do a mandatory training for all substitutes in the district, because we feel like no matter where you go, you should get the same support from your administration and from your colleagues. And that goes even as far as whether it's security, or whether it's, you know, where you go when you don't have your class, you know, attendance procedures. So, that's the type of thing that we're going to address in a mandatory training this summer. And then that gives us a better idea of if somebody isn't following expectations, it gives substitutes a chance to get to know us and the administration a little bit better, so that if they don't know things, they certainly can ask if it's not covered in the training. But it also gives them a time in the training for some camaraderie between other substitutes. Then that way, if there are issues along the way, and this unfortunately happens, that it isn't a good fit for somebody to be a substitute teacher, that then they're actually removed from the position, and they're on kind of a no-call list.
Mrs. Marcus, you have a question?
Yeah, regarding the substitutes, a couple of comments. Sometimes when you have a great teacher that is a sub, the word spreads amongst the other teachers, so that you know that you've got someone of quality, or someone that can control the classroom, and that's a very important thing. But in addition to that, every substitute teacher is given a form, as is the teacher, to fill out about the substitute, and I think we've become somewhat lax in using those to evaluate the effectiveness of our substitute teachers. I think we need to use that a little more and monitor that a little more closely, because I know that as a teacher, that was always an issue. And sometimes the teachers themselves get evaluated by the sub, too, by the lesson plans they leave, and so on. So, it's a way of really monitoring yourself and the teachers, but I think that that form needs to be used a little more clearly and looked at a little more. I think it's just not something you dump in the file or put it aside. I think that's a very important piece of paper.
Okay. Any other discussion on this item? Okay, moving on, all those in favor of approving the certificated personnel report?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's 5-0, moving on. Somebody pulled, may I have a motion, please, for agenda item 9C?
That would be me.
Okay, Mr. Marcus?
I was noticing this.
I'll make, one second, I'll make a motion to approve the PSA with Hinge Education LLC.
I second.
Thank you.
I was noticing the professional development that's going to be focusing on differentiating instruction and student engagement, and it's being listed as being for the I-4 coaches and tech innovators, and I'm a little bit concerned about that reaching out to the faculty in general. And I hope that there is a plan where others can see this or be at this professional development, or that there will be lessons that will, or sessions that will be, where they can present the material that they learn, because I think this is something that's very important for us when we talk about engaging students and differentiating instruction. And if that's there, this is our chance to let the teachers see it. So, I don't like the fact that it was just sort of said, "I-4 coaches and tech innovators." I'd like to see it a little more open.
Okay, so I think someone's here to respond to you.
Mr. Damico, do you want to?
Mr. Damico?
Good evening. Good evening. Nice to see you, nice to see you well. Dave Damico, interim executive director for technology. You've got a great point, and this event is happening on March 10, so it was a scheduled professional learning day for the innovators, and for the I-4 coaches, and for administrators who are interested. So, about 30 people in that group, who already support teachers around engagement and differentiation, and implementing and using technology in the classroom. I'd love to see this be a first of more. Dr. McDowell's an amazing trainer, and he, he is really leading a movement around visible learning, which is understanding, helping teachers understand where kids are in their learning, helping teachers understand, help kids understand where they are in their learning. So, that is in the plan, but this was, this was an attempt to kind of jumpstart that with a day that was already scheduled and really didn't have an agenda. You're welcome.
Any other further discussion on this item? Okay, all those in favor of approving the professional services agreement with Hinge Education LLC?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's 5-0. Moving on, somebody had pulled item 9F.
Ratification of purchase order report number 13 for 2019-2020.
I will second that. Discussion.
Yes, a couple of questions. There was a, an item on the PO for new frontier coffee through ROP. What can somebody just explain? That's a lot of coffee.
So, that happens to fall on Career Day for the high school, so this is for the hundreds of volunteers that come out and help with the Career Day at the high school.
Okay, that, good, thank, and then the, there was insurance with locked-in companies for Ourdale, it said. Is that part of the bond program?
Yeah, I had the same question.
So, I can go ahead and answer that for you if you, if you want to. So, I did look into that, and, and the answer is yes. For our construction projects, we obtain builder's risk insurance. In the past, we've utilized Keenan, and for this project, it's a little bit slightly different methodology, so, you know, they need to cover losses during the construction phase at ER, and so the fees associated with this insurance are paid for with Measure E.
Okay, and that's at a soft cost, right? Yeah, thanks. Okay?
Hey, great. Oh, sorry.
One more question. There is a PO for Garza Construction on there, and then there's also an item later in the contract for the same amount for the ratification, for the work at the high school. So, I'm just curious, shouldn't we be approving the ratification prior to be, prior to approving a purchase order? Are we a little out of order on this one?
So, we've done this in the past for some other items, and it's common that that happens so that, you know, it happens at the same agenda, because the contract approval is given that the work has already taken place, or it's been authorized under the bond projects. So, it's something that we've done in the past.
Okay, is that, it just, it just seemed weird, because usually we approve the ratification of the agreement, and then it's on the PO, then the purchase order follows, and then the payment. That is correct, right, Mr. Roach? Okay. So, normally, I mean, technically, this is a little out of order?
Correct.
Okay.
Is this referring, are you referring to the $49,000 for the street repairs?
Yes.
I had a question on that.
Later on, facilities?
When it comes up, it comes up later.
In facilities, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you can ask it now, because we're on it, because this is the PO item.
Okay, that was the question that I had. I wonder if that had been vetted, and if there was other bids on that, because that was, I didn't see anything other than the fact that they were going to be doing it, and I did not see where this had been put out for bidding.
Question.
That's the question that I had. And I don't know if that's premature.
Does someone answer that question?
Mr. Pileman certainly can.
Thank you. Three vendors were approached on our approved list for the street repairs for the high school. Out of those three vendors, we received two proposals, and Edgar Garza was the lowest of the proposals received.
That was a mention, remember, that was a solid.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion, further discussion on this item? Okay, so may I please, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. Moving on to reports. Superintendent's report, Dr. Bregge.
Okay, so this is a little bit out of order, so let me skip through some of the exciting topics we're going to come back to. Just want to give you a brief update, just want to talk to you about two different things. The first is our strategic planning update. We have had our first initial meeting with Bonnie from Total School Solutions, just to start to build a framework, which I'll have an extensive detailed presentation for you at our next board meeting. But we did talk about, like, what's happening next, which it's really important to talk about our stakeholder focus groups, and so the Board of Education certainly is one of those groups, so Bonnie will be reaching out to you to get your input on our strategic plan. We're also looking at our parent groups, and we're working with BHEA to create a time for teachers to come in, community members, so all of our focus groups, and our leadership groups with our PTAs. There's an extensive amount of focus groups that are happening, so that we can get input from our community to help lead us with our strategic planning. The community participation focus groups is going to be a big part of seeing, just getting a pulse of our staff and our community to provide us with some information, and we will, of course, be able to talk about what that is once we've accumulated all of that, that data. The one thing that we've already done that is, is really important in this process, that the Board of Education has already successfully accomplished, and that is recommitting to its mission and its vision. So, that was very purposeful and very timing for us as we move forward. So, some of the next steps, I'll be reaching out to get some information from board members about some community members that will be invited to the focus group, and I'll send you an email basically outlining what I'm looking for. The focus group participants, I'm reaching out to them after our presentation this evening to, we've set some dates and some times that we would like to utilize Total School Solutions to interview our community and our staff and our board. We're going to be, our next steps analyzing that information, not only that information, but also some of the academic data, and then we will begin to develop goals and objectives. Another really important part of our strategic planning that is unique in nature is, if you remember, part of our goal and our design was to align this with our LCAP, which a lot of school districts, I think it's a misstep that they don't do that, and oftentimes, an LCAP does not even point in the same direction as, as the roadmap in their strategic plan. So, we're going to do that at the same time, which makes sense, and it's really going to give us a better product at the end. We will be developing our action steps. There's a lot of draft work with strategic planning, which we will bring back to our Board of Education. And then finally, at the very end, sometime in May is our hope, and our goal is to present to you our final work, but we will be updating the board. You will receive an update, every one of our board members will receive an update at our meetings along the way, so that you can see our progress.
Thank you, Dr. Bregge. Student Board report.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry about that. So, I'm done with that portion.
Oh, now we're going to vaping.
And so, Ms. Darkins and Ms. Chisholm are going to give you just an update, the vaping, the vaping part of our work, which we've really expanded since we've had our student panel. And so, at this time, Laura and Rebecca will give you an update on where we are with our vaping efforts.
Yes, we need a clicker. Hello, everybody. Nice to see you. We are here to discuss the progress that has been made from a cabinet perspective since we last met and the resolution was finalized from the Board of Education and just to show you a little bit of progress that has been made. So firstly, the posters that were provided by the Student Services Department have been placed around the high school and the middle school. And these are just a few photos that you can see of some of our students standing by those posters. As Mr. Spitz pointed out at the time, they are very large. And so I will follow up with something that Laura's passing, Ms. Chisholm, sorry about that, that she's passing out now as to a solution to that. The resolution that was passed was sent to every stakeholder that we have in the BHUSD community district-wide via email. Additionally, we sent out a press release. It was covered by the press specifically in The Courier. It was blasted via social media. And it was also displayed in that same size as the posters that you're holding now in prominent positions, three at each school. In addition to that, it was featured in the most recent update from Dr. Bregge to the community about what's going on in BHUSD. In terms of the vaping poster idea, we took the direction from the board members and our design, graphic design student intern from the high school, Lily Sata, designed three different campaigns for those smaller posters that you are holding to be displayed in toilet stalls, stairwells, and in classrooms as an alternative in addition to the ones that were provided by Student Services that have already been displayed around the schools. So a survey was then sent to the middle school and the high school separately so we could ascertain what is the reaction of high schoolers in comparison to middle schoolers. And you can see the survey question on the right-hand side there. Which of these might make you quit if you were to vape? Because as we know, our students would never participate in such an activity. So we then collected these survey responses and the students voted on what they felt most appealed to them if they were to participate in vaping. At the high school, we had 75 responses with the winner being the poster number, sorry, letter B, which if I go back one slide is that middle poster with the red line through it that says, "Don't vape." And then at the middle school, we had 199 responses with the winner being poster number C, sorry, letter C, which is the "Get Your Head Out of the Clouds, Vaping Kills." So we then took those responses and saw that we had very close runner-ups. So between 48 and 45% was the difference between B and C. And then we had 46 and 37% the difference between C and B at the middle school. Generally speaking, I think that we can gather from that, that both of those posters and campaigns were resonating with the students at both of the high school and the middle school. And so we did instruct our Lily, our graphic design intern, to go forward. On the next slide, you can see here, she created two sets of the campaigns based on those initial posters. So the top one was the one that was most popular at BVMS and the bottom one was the most popular at the high school. However, we do feel that it is important to have both of those displayed at both schools because it was such a close, it was almost a tie between them. So some of them, as you will see at the bottom, the difference between them, it says that you can go to the nominate center if you need help. And some of them, it actually says that you need to speak with your counselor. So that's the difference for the middle school as opposed to the high school. So a big thank you to Lily for creating these campaigns and we really look forward to rolling them out at both the middle and the high school. I will now pass it over to Ms. Chisholm to give the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Darkins. So at the study session on vaping, the board asked that I return with some, thank you, some recommendations as to the next steps. In front of you, you have a draft of Board Policy 5131.62 for students regarding tobacco use. This is just the draft form. As you can see, there are a lot of things that are missing, everything in red are things that are being added. This is for your review to give any input. And then it will be brought for a first reading on the 28th. The next piece is, we talked a little bit about discipline and what, what we are going to do as a district. I'm still working, my staff and I are still working to get information and input from other districts on how they're handling this, this problem. As we discussed, it's not a cookie cutter solution. We need to look at different pieces. And also, the board was very clear that we want to provide support to our students and not just a punitive approach. So that will be an ongoing discussion, that I will bring some additional information back to you regarding that. Our homeschool collaboration, this is our parent education piece that we discussed, probably looking at doing some assemblies and or some parent nights on vaping, similar to what was done at the high school with Ally Norman Franks and the Norman Center. That was an awesome presentation that was done, but probably we need to do it more, more than once a year. We have some information from BHPD that our, one of our school safety officers has offered to do some, some informative presentation on vaping for our grades three through five coming on campus and actually talking with our students. So that's something that we are looking into doing. And then specifically, what changes do we recommend on our campuses? Those are the last three items that you see. Facilities is looking at vape detectors for both the middle school and the high school. We need to look at installing them across both campuses. Additional cameras and security staff to help monitor areas that are, that are kind of out of sight or blind spots at this time to help increase supervision. Because again, if you don't see it, you don't know what's happening. Okay, so what are our next steps? Mrs. Darkins, Ms. Darkins kind of touched on this. We are starting to display the smaller, the smaller posters throughout the middle school and high school. I will present you with, with the first reading of the board, revised board policy on the 28th. We are starting to implement any, some of the board's direction and we're going to continue to expand the anti-vaping campaign. And that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Chisholm. I will open it up for questions, but I believe that Dr. Bregge also wants to include something else.
Yes, I just want to say, I'm really proud of the, the efforts that we're making towards anti-vaping. If you look at it from this perspective, over the last 10 years, the, the number of people smoking has, has really decreased significantly. And the epidemic that we're seeing today with vaping is we're now seeing those efforts of our anti-smoking prevention that it's, we're now seeing a reverse and we're, we're starting to see those numbers for smoking go back up again. And it's really startling and I'm just proud that we're spending a lot of time on this and, and not only just at the high school and middle school, but also we're working with our principals to start some exposure at the elementary level as well as far as the education and prevention piece. The other thing I wanted to mention really quick before I hand this over to Mr. Recupero, and Mr. Allen is here tonight and he's here to join our conversation about something else. But I, I want to just give him a special thank you because last Tuesday was best in show at our middle school. And that was a highlight for me personally in the last three years that I've been here to go to an event that was structured but not overstructured. So there were tons of staff there, there was active participation, there were performances. And, and the beauty of the evening is that people were not told where to go and when to be there, that it was this exploratory type environment and climate and culture that was so welcoming. And one of the most exciting parts that I observed during the evening was current BV students that were welcoming their own sibling that was coming. And they, they just were so excited. They, they know BVMS like the back of their hand and they really took them on, on quite a tour. So it was really exciting for, to see that transfer process. So I just want to thank Mr. Allen for that. There, there's so much work that goes into these types of events, but the work that you're doing collaboratively with your PTA could, could really be a model for others. It was just an exceptional evening, so thank you.
Can we just come in on the vaping?
Yes. So we're going to go around, Mr. Recupero.
I mean, yeah, as Dr. Bregge said, I'm like very pleased with like the progress being made and how we're continuing to work towards it even after the student panel and, you know, the board discussion. So I'm glad to see that we're continuing to follow through with that.
Thank you. Mr. Margot.
You know, there's no better way to get a student to do something than to tell them that they shouldn't do it, right? So, so as much as, as we'll see what the results of this campaign is, I think it's important that the board is coming in and recognizing that this is a problem. But more than anything, and I'll speak for myself, but hopefully my colleagues will echo this, is it's a health issue, right? The Board of Education is showing that they care about our students' health. That's what this really comes down to. It's not a punitive program. It's an awareness program. It's a prevention program and it's a health program. So that I can support and get behind. So hopefully those thoughts can echo in students as they think about whether they want to go down this path because nothing good will come of it as far as their health is concerned. Thanks.
Mr. Spitz.
Well, I certainly agree with what Mr. Margot said, has said. I think it's also important to recognize that our students who are vaping are using products by and large, by almost entirely, that are not injuring their lungs. They are using the products that are based on nicotine and nicotine affects the, the brain. And it seems to me that that, that's what, in our case, in the case of this district, that's what we need to concentrate on because if you, if you tell stu-, if you tell students something and the fact is that they don't see any lung problems, then they feel, and rightly, possibly rightly so, that they're not being given straight dope, straight information. But in our case, probably almost all of our students who vape are using flavored vapes and that is the nicotine-based product. And nicotine is very, very addictive, number one. And number two, it has, it affects students' memory and ability to grasp and recall and, and it, it, these effects on their brain can be permanent. These are, these are, this is proven information. So that's where I think our focus needs to be.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. Mrs. Walker-Schumann.
I'm really pleased to see such a quick turnaround from the board direction and the conversations that we've had and the panels that we've had. So I'm really happy to see that. I love that our student, graphic designer helped design it. I love that there was a poll that students get to be part of. I think that brings them in, makes them part of the solution. And I'm, I'm happy to see some progress. I mean, we have a long road and I don't know that, that there's ever really going to be the expectation of being able to conquer this entirely in our school district, but I think we have a long road and we're making some good steps in the right direction. So I'm looking forward to continued conversations about it, also with BHPD and working on the rest of the things that we had discussed.
Thank you. Mrs. Marcus.
Well, I agree with everything that's been said so far, which, because you always get to the fourth person and that's what happens. But I would like to make one more comment. And that is that I am so pleased to see that this is the revised policy which is taking place. And one of my favorite expressions to students was, is to be forewarned, is to be forearmed. So they are going to know the consequences and they're out there and they're going to be ready for them to see. So there's not going to be any secret about it. I'm glad that we've not only addressing the, the harm that it does and, and the way the students are involved, but that the students will know what the consequences are.
Okay, so I'm going to agree as the fifth person on this board with everything that has been said. Ms. Chisholm, thank you for bringing this back to us. I look forward to getting into more detail about how we're going to execute this because I think everyone in the community is anxious to really learn about the details of that. And so, you know, I, I think this is great progress and, you know, let's continue to stay on this path of progress. I do have a question for Mrs. Darkins. I thought that the board gave direction as it relates to the poster for students to get creative and, am I wrong? Did we not like, did we not talk about maybe having the students look at, you know, how they would develop a poster and be creative and then they would vote about, around, you know, they would decide on what to, to vote on? Did we not say that?
Yes.
But this is, they, they actually do these posters? I thought they were going to actually design them themselves. I thought, did you say that your, your designer?
Her intern did.
Right. So I thought students were going to do it.
She's a student.
Right. But I thought that there was going to be like a competition and students, right. I understand she's a student, but I thought that students were going to engage in a competition of some sort and get creative. And then she would decide. Is that not what we gave direction on? Did I completely miss that one?
No, I think we left it up to Rebecca to determine.
To determine? I apologize if I missed that. No, no, no. I want to get clarity on what I thought, but this is great. I mean, I understand she's an intern. I thought the students were going to give input as to what they perceived to be the poster of the choice.
Every student was provided the opportunity to vote in the survey of which one appealed to them most.
But she created it.
But she did create.
Okay, that's it. That was my question. I was asked that question recently and I, I thought that that's what we agreed to. But that's fine. This is wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, moving on to Mr. Recupero for student board report.
My report is very sports oriented, so bear with me. There's been a lot of sports news with winter sports concluding and playoffs starting and all. But, so after being undefeated in the Bay League for the second year in a row, the Beverly Hills High School wrestling team was runner-ups in the CIF dual meet two weekends ago. Last Friday, the team hosted the individual league championship. So individuals were competing rather than the team as a unit. This was held in the swim gym on Friday and 12 wrestlers from the team are moving on to the next round or to the CIF round, which is pretty remarkable. All the Beverly Vista Middle School basketball teams have been coming away with strong wins. I had the opportunity to attend the seventh grade boys' basketball game. The team is very talented and we're a cohesive unit, so it's great to see all the seventh graders working together and all the other teams as well. Now, the high school boys' basketball team has their first playoff game tomorrow night in the swim gym. Should be a fun one. We moved up a division, so it's going to be a competitive game. And the girls' soccer team had their first playoff game this afternoon. It might still be going on, I don't know, but when I left it, it was 1-1. So hopefully we pulled away with the win.
They won 2-1.
They won. Awesome. That's great to hear. So they, the girls' team won and they're moving on. And I had the chance, lastly, I had the chance to attend the a cappella showcase. It was a lot of fun as always and that's all.
Thank you so much for that. Okay, moving on to planning and facilities. May I please have a motion for the approval of the amendment number 13?
I will make a motion to approve amendment 13 to the agreement with HMC for Al O'Dea School Seismic retrofit and modernization project.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
5-0.
I move a movement of ratification of amendment number to the, number one to the agreement with SVA Architects, Inc. to provide Phase II drawings and specifications for miscellaneous reconfiguration upgrades at Beverly Vista School.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or, nope, 5-0.
And concrete work at the Beverly Hills High School.
I'll second. Any discussion?
That was the one that I was referring to before.
Yes, it was. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions? No, 5-0. Okay, moving on to professional and official business. So we are going to start with the discussion of item 12C, discussion of staff parking around Beverly Vista Middle School. And I believe that someone from the city is here. Dr. Bregge, I will give you the...
Josh, if you can switch this out for us. Thank you. While that's being done, I'm going to, I'm going to ask Mr. Allen just to come on down. And Lieutenant Trejo is here and we love working with you, Lieutenant. So at any point, feel free to, to join in the conversation. The first thing that I want to talk about is, yeah, is the staff parking at Beverly Vista Middle School? Vista Middle School? Thank you. Oops. Okay, so, and Mr. Allen, feel free to jump in. So we worked a lot of hours on staff parking.
A lot.
And so trying to find the best places for teachers and staff to park. And so when we began school, we soon realized that there wasn't enough parking for staff. We reached out to our neighbors. We were on foot, asking businesses, parking garage people, just everywhere, to see if we could entertain an agreement to have some additional parking spots. The wonderful people at NESA, they were very cooperative and collaborative with us, and they offered us some spots. It's gone back and forth a little bit on how many spots we get from them depending on the services that they have during the day, but it's anywhere from, I think it's 12 to 15 or so at...
Currently, 11 spots are taken full-time, and it fluctuates, but about 11 spots.
Right, I think we started with 20, to be perfectly frank, and then now we're down to about 11. And so that has happened over a period of time, just because they have their own, their own needs as well. We did reach out. We were working with the police department on, you know, coming up with all kinds of different ideas. The parking garage at, and you can see on your map, it's 221 North Crescent, is really an eight or nine-minute walk away, and so that was offered to staff. I'll let Mr. Allen tell you a little bit about that, but I think what has happened here, if I can just be presumptuous, and, you know, things were offered, but we didn't hear for a very long time that there were any issues until there was some ticketing that happened, and this is not a complaint, but the first that we heard that there were even some issues with then people not parking in the garage, and then people struggling in finding a place, was when the enforcement started. And I'll let Mr. Allen kind of jump in at that point.
Sure. Well, currently, we have 70 spots in the Beverly Vista staff parking lot. We also have three handicap spots, of which one is being utilized. The two, there are two handicap spots that are not, but they cannot be utilized by a regular car, by a regular parker. The NESA parking garage again has 11 spots. We have about 35 staff members that are currently parking on the streets. They include three...
How many, Mr. Allen? I'm sorry?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five in the street.
So they include three administrators, including myself, and then Ms. McCray actually takes a spot in the lot. And then 32 instructional aides, cafeteria workers, playground aides, security officers, custodial, the groundskeepers, staff, we're all on the streets and parking in the community. One of the things that we, I actually parked in the Crescent garage a couple of times, but I can tell you that if you're just walking without lights or anything else, it might be 10 minutes. But there's a light at Wilshire, and it can take up to 15 minutes, depending on the lights and everything else, to walk over. And, you know, if it's raining, if it's cold, if it's you're carrying a lot of things, you've got your briefcase, you've got whatever you're taking to school this morning. I picked up two space heaters from Home Depot for a classroom that I had to carry in. I mean, you know, we transport things. You know, it's a little difficult. That's a bit of a walk to get into school. So we're kind of, we rotate our cars, and we're parking on the streets, so.
You moving cars during the day?
We do. We do. I actually, this week, I asked some of the cafeteria workers. My real concern is for them, because a ticket for them is their day's wage. I mean, they're part-time workers, so these people are 20-hour-a-week workers, and so if they get a ticket, it's that $60 ticket, they just paid to work for the day, and I worry really, I really worry about them. And so I asked them to start coming a few minutes later until after our drop-off, and then just parking on the white curb. What that does is that gives them parking along the white curb, but it, all of our parents then that are dropping off or that are coming by during the day for IEPs and parent meetings and those kinds of things, it takes that space away from them, and now they're parking on the streets when they have meetings. And then when you combine that with the new proposal to take away Crescent and the temporary parking on Crescent, it adds, it exacerbates the problem for us.
And the Crescent option is, you know, I just, really reaching for a solution. One of the solutions that we had was to look at the on-street parking, and we were driving up and down, and we were able to see that, that, you know, we could clearly find, like at one block, you know, have two people park on one full block just because there was open space, and then on the next block. So we wouldn't just jam all of the side streets with staff members, is that we would be very intentional about where people were parking, whether it was, you know, two places on one block, two on a block that's, you know, a block away, and that we would be at that point able to accommodate the extra cars. You know, it was great, the offer is, I mean, it's a wonderful parking garage, but...
Dr. Bregge, can I jump in a little bit about the way you were just talking about and about spreading out? There's precedent, historical precedent at Beverly Vista for that very thing. When Beverly Vista was in construction earlier on, when they were in portables and the staff lot was actually covered with portable, so you remember that area where the current staff lot used to be all portables when Beverly Vista was in construction? And so what happened was, they took the staff, because Kevin Painter was a teacher at Beverly Vista, so he and I have had these conversations multiple times. They took the staff and parked them in the streets, and the arrangement that they made with the city at the time was that people were assigned to specific streets that they parked on. And so you were assigned four or five cars to a street, and they, so out in a radius around Beverly Vista to accommodate staff, because they didn't have a staff lot at all at that time and during the construction. And so there is historical precedent for that. It's not, it's not just the middle school. It's, there's actually a precedent for that very plan, but on a much smaller scale, because we have a lot fewer cars that need that additional parking than existed at that time, so.
Okay, so does that conclude? Does the city want to say anything or?
We're only talking about staff parking right now, right?
I'm sorry, what was that?
We're talking about Crescent.
We're only talking about staff parking right now and the Crescent parking lot as it relates to staff parking?
Right.
Or are we also talking about Crescent Drive parking restrictions?
That's going to be next. I thought we'd separate them because they're really two different issues, if that's okay?
Yeah. Are we going to go around?
Right, I just wanted to see if the staff from the city is here, I was told, and I just wanted to ask if they had anything to add before we go around.
Martha Eros is the transportation planner for the City of Beverly Hills.
It's me. Thank you. Well, thank you for allowing me to speak. So we have been working in this project area for quite a time, for quite some time, and it's not just limited to the time with the conversion of the middle school. We have had previous resident-initiated requests to modify parking on the adjacent street, so this does go back in reference to the, I think the construction was back in 1990. That was by resolution of the city council. So any discussion about spreading parking or school-related parking into the residential neighborhoods, that would require a larger discussion at both the Traffic and Parking Commission level and the city council level. Specific to the school parking, I know that there have been, or the instructor parking at the Crescent lot, I know that there have been discussions on that and that spaces were offered to the school district to use. As far as the enforcement, I believe that's all resident-initiated, when they contact the police department, the traffic control officers to go out and enforce the existing time limits. So if they park, anyone parking beyond the existing timeline will get a citation. As far as any resolution to that, I don't have anything to put on, bring forward to you tonight. We do know that we work closely with Dr. Bregge and Ms. Starkin and Mr. Lovelace on the discussion as we move forward. Parking is always a very challenging, especially in these multifamily areas where, you know, these buildings were constructed in the 1920s, '30s with very limited off-site parking. Now, you know, just culturally, we have multiple vehicles, which is greater demand, so that would take much more discussion. I would have to, you know, we'd have to go back to the city and look at what alternatives are. If there was any discussion about filtering out into the residential neighborhoods, that does require going, you know, having a city council discussion with them. Happy to answer any questions?
Okay, so we will now, did the officer have anything to add? No?
Unless you have a question.
Okay, so we will start with Mr. Awikapur. Nope. Mr. Margot.
Are you looking, Dr. Bregge, are you looking for any direction from us tonight about this?
The reason this came up, if I may, is because we, you know, there was a, I believe there was a Parking and Traffic Commission meeting on Thursday, and parents were wondering, you know, why the school board hasn't, I called Dr. Bregge, and so we decided to put it on the agenda so that everyone here at the DIES understands what has taken place in the last few days. I understand the Traffic and Parking Commission had a meeting on Thursday, and they voted to allow Crescent, is it Crescent or?
Yes, Crescent.
Crescent, yes, to have...
So we did have a Traffic and Parking Commission last Thursday morning, and it was to review a resident-initiated request to modify the existing one-hour parking regulation to no parking anytime. That is a permit zone. That's our project area, and all of our reports are available online for your review. So the Traffic and Parking Commission voted three in support, one in opposition, and one abstained, to move forward with staff's recommendation to support the no parking anytime regulation. This was the first review. We did notice the entire quadrant, in addition to the businesses on Wilshire and Beverly and also NESA, and of course, we did reach out to the school district to make sure that Mr. Allen was aware of it, and anyone else from the school district was invited to attend. So the next step is to go to city council for formal review, and the city council makes the final decision on whether or not to support it, deny it, or modify it. So currently, we are tentatively scheduled for March 31st. If that, if we can't get on the agenda for that day, that's what staff is planning, we would go back, we would try to get on the April 21st agenda.
So to answer your question, Mr. Margot, this is for information, just so that we have a very transparent discussion about, you know, where we are and what we as a board are, you know, thinking of doing to address this issue, and also to get Mr. Allen here so that he can share his observations and concerns as well.
And another, just one more piece to this, Mr. Margot, just to let you know that previous to the Crescent no parking proposal, Cannon, last April...
Right.
Requested no parking, and it was granted. So Cannon is now no parking. Crescent is coming up, and it was pointed out at the Traffic Commission meeting last Thursday that about eight months prior, after they make an area no parking, then it, they'll have a request from another street. So one street at a time, our city is becoming no parking.
So it's apparent that we need a long-term solution and a short-term solution. We have really, it sounds like we have neither. It seems like all of our short-term solutions are turning up bust. Is that correct? I mean, is your, is your staff parking on Crescent or are they...
The staff parking lot is at the corner of Elm and...
Is your staff parking on 200 South Crescent? The one that we're talking about now, that we're going to be talking about in a minute? Are they parking there?
Somewherever we can find parking. Like, we have to move our cars.
So they wouldn't be...
Right, so they're not parking there all day? I mean, they're...
Right, well, everything else is two hours, so we still, we're moving cars and...
Okay, so...
So, and I'm hearing that there's a begrudgingness to park on the 221 Crescent address, right? They don't, is anybody parking there or nobody wants to park there?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so nobody's parking there?
No.
So I wonder about the lot on 200 South Beverly?
We asked about that, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but that was the very first thing that we asked for, because we thought that that would be, you know, prime walking for our staff, and that garage, there's so much traffic and there's so much activity that that parking lot fills up, and so that was not being able, they weren't able to offer us that.
Okay, because it would eliminate the traffic light in Wilshire and all that stuff, so it would seem like a more viable temporary solution. All right, I mean, for information only, thank you for the information. I have no, I wish I had better solutions. I did offer, I have offered in the past, and the offer still stands.
I know.
Palm Drive is only .3 miles from Big V.
It's true.
And there are no traffic lights, and like I said, I would be happy to print out permits, and anybody who wants to park there, it's an open door. I mean, listen, my street right now has so much construction on it, and none of them have permits in it. They don't, you guys want to make some money, go down Palm Drive, okay? They're not putting the permits in the construction trucks there, just saying.
Okay, Mr. Spitz. Thank you, Mr. Margot.
So if I understand correctly, Mr. Allen, you're short some 67 parking spaces.
No, that's, we, we're short 35.
35 total?
35 total.
I see, and that includes the miscellaneous jobs that you had talked about.
Right, the critical support jobs.
So there's 35. Well, I'm glad that it's not double that. This is a very serious problem, a very serious problem. We had this problem in the '70s when I was on the board. There were, the school had no parking spaces, and the city was giving out tickets to everyone, all the teachers, all the time, every day.
Wow.
And we were very, very fortunate because there was a church that was closing down, and we managed to acquire the property. Tear down the church, and that is your parking lot today.
Wow, that's an interesting history.
And Mr. Margot is right. We, you know, we need to, we need to look for a short-term resolution and a long-term. There's no question about that. And we're going to have to be somewhat creative. The long-term is to expand the parking that we have right now, and that might be to level if it's, if it's big enough, if the lot is big enough, I think it probably is, and maybe that would do the job. Maybe that would, maybe that would provide 35 more spaces in a, in a, in a lower level, or an upper level, by the way. Maybe it's an upper level. I think that may be the long-term solution. You may need more as, if you have to increase, if it turns out that you're increasing your enrollment and you have to have a few more teachers, but at any rate, right now, you need a solution for 35 parking spots.
All right.
Question. I have no idea about this. Is the, is the parking structure at Horace Manfield? Can anybody tell me whether that...
There are some spots available, but not very many.
They don't have that many?
Well, as many as there are, and this is temporary, we could have them used and have a shuttle service to and from. That would be, that would be a temporary solution.
From the high school.
And there may be some other spots where we could... And there may be some other spots where we could, we could find parking spaces and do, do shuttles. It's, it's an outlay, it's, it's, it's not free, it's not cheap, but we need a solution. And the solution, now, as far as the ticketing is concerned, I don't think that we can look with anger toward the city, because residents have priority over the parking on their street. There's just no question about it. And so I would encourage staff to look at the, at the spaces at Horace Mann and look for some other large spaces that commercial, parking. One possibility might be under the tennis courts on La Cienega. That's a huge parking facility that I think has empty spaces and run a shuttle service. That's temporary. And then, see what, see what we can come up with for two levels on our current parking lot for a permanent solution. That's it.
All right, so, I'm going to get a little bit creative, because this has been kind of an ongoing problem that we've been talking about in facilities for a while. I agree with, with what Mr. Spitz said, but I think the closest proximity is the Crescent Drive parking lot. So if we're going to use a parking lot, and we know we can fit all the spots that we need there, I would say that we ought to work on some kind of an arrangement for a shuttle from there, or Uber service, or invest in buying a passenger van that can shuttle the teachers at that particular time of day, or support staff, whatever ends up parking there.
That parking lot, use it frequently.
But the city has said that, that we can have the spaces we need from that Crescent lot.
Yes.
Correct? So, so, and that's closest in proximity. I know that there's a light there, but if we're having a shuttle service, that cuts down on the amount of time. So, so I think that's actually a really good temporary solution. I'm going to go back to something that I had brought up before, but I don't know that we've ever actually discussed it together as a board. There are several schools in LAUSD, like New York City, that have the lift in the parking lot. So a car pulls in, you push a button, it lifts a car up, another one can park underneath. There are schools in LAUSD that have it, so I know that it can be done. Whether or not we can get DSA to agree to grandfather us in for that purpose, I don't know. The fact that there's no school building on that property bodes well, and I think it's something that we should talk about again and ask permission for, and try to see if there's a path there, because that actually would be, that would be something we could execute in a midterm, right?
Now, would you need an attendant for the parking lot to make that happen? I think you would.
No, there are, in the alley between El Camino and Beverly Drive, there are retail spots that are short of parking for their employees, and they have it in the back of theirs, and they are self-operated. So it's, push a big red button, and it lifts a car up, and, and then the next one parks underneath. There is no parking attendant. So I think that's something that we should look at, because I think that's a good near-term solution. Not obviously a long-term solution, we still have to do some planning, but when it comes to building a parking lot, whether it's digging or building up, as we know with DSA, that's not something that happens in a short term. That can be a five-year project, and unfortunately, we don't have that much time to wait. I do want to make one point. The issue of staff parking and the issue of parking restrictions on South Crescent, the 200 block, are really two separate issues. I know they intersect a little bit, but I watched that Traffic and Parking Commission meeting, and I don't, I don't believe that this city is trying to stick one to us. I don't believe the residents are trying to stick one to us. In fact, there actually were several residents that were talking about the difficulty they have, because there are employees that work on Beverly Drive at the restaurants and at the different retail shops that park on Crescent and walk to work and leave their car there all day. So it's not just on our staff.
That's right.
It's not just on our parents. There are a lot of other reasons that they're having those issues, so I don't want this to become a city versus school district, or parents versus resident issue. That said, and I'm going to get a little controversial, I know I have a tendency to wade into this stuff, the parents have to do a better job of observing the parking restrictions and the rules. And I will tell you this, and you know, because we're out there every morning together at BV, they don't follow the rules, they make U-turns in the middle of the block with the sign that says "No U-Turn," they drive too fast when there's no one on the street, they go flying over the humps. In the afternoons, when I come to pick up my daughter, I park a block away, and I have her walk to me. There are cars that are parked in the red zone, blocking the fire hydrant, there are cars that are parked blocking the crosswalks, there are students that can't get through the crosswalks because of the way the parents are parking. So if we're going to talk about solutions, it can't just be, how do we deal with the staff parking, and we're upset that we're not going to be able to utilize the 200 block of South Crescent. We have to lean more heavily on our parents to observe the rules and regulations in the city. And that has to be done in a respectful manner, and also for benefit of the students, because the students that are walking and skateboarding and razor scootering are at risk when those cars block those areas. It blocks up traffic, it makes it gridlocked, it makes it, it makes it much worse. So I think it's actually on us as a, as a board and the administration for the school site to regularly reach out to parents and say, hey, guys, we can do better here. And I know that this doesn't really touch a lot on the drop-off, although we do have issues sometimes with gridlock with drop-off, but I will tell you, I'm out there every day, there is a very small handful of families that carpool here. And I know that there are many families that share the same block that could carpool, and that could dramatically cut down on the amount of traffic on the street and the congestion in the area, and that's something I think we should explore and incentivize parents and families to do. Because what we're talking about with all of these different things, with the staff parking and the, and the community parking on South Crescent and the drop-off and pickup that happens at Beverly Vista, is making the experience better for the community and the families that live here, and the staff that service our locations. And that should be what drives our decision-making. So I think we need to remind our parents that they have a role to play here. And this, a lot of what was discussed were citations that were issued to parents that were blocking driveways while sitting in their car waiting for their students to come around the block. It shouldn't have to be said that that's not okay, because I guarantee you, that parent, if it happened at their house, would not be okay with it. So we need to do a better job making sure our parents are toeing the line as well.
Okay, Mrs. Marcus.
Well, I think the most important, we're just talking about parking itself, and the problem is parking, and providing the parking for the staff-
Right.
And for the workers and the people who work, and I can, I can sympathize with them, I'm hoping that we can come up with something creative. I myself am not sure what that plan would be, but I think a lot of ideas have been discussed already, and I think that we need just to investigate some of those plans and some of those ideas, to see what we can do to help these people. I know, right in the beginning of the year, I got a call from a person who was a sub that got a ticket and was taken care of, but I know that the problem is major, and I feel very badly about it, and I just hope that we can come up with a solution. I myself don't have a crystal ball, I don't know what it would be, but I know that we could get creative, and maybe we can come up with some ideas.
Thank you. Dr. Breggy had something to say, and then I will go.
I just want to say that, you know, we've, we've spent so much time on this issue, and we've worked really well with Martha and Lieutenant Trejo. It's been amazing, and we've, you know, I think we've exhausted some resources at, at our level, at our staff meetings, so, you know, I do think we need to either elevate this and start speaking with the city council as partners, that we need, we need some help here. Because I do agree with, with what Mr. Margot said about the long-term and short-term goals. I'm also in favor of coming back to the board with just a, a scope of work estimate of what that would look like to have, you know, to have somebody that is part of a shuttle helping with staff, just so we can get an idea of what that looks like and how expensive that is. You know, it's something that would have to run often. When you have an active middle school like we do, there are staff that are coming and going at all different, you know, it's, as Mr. Allen mentioned in the beginning, playground aides and our, our food service worker, like, everyone has a different schedule, so it would really have to be something that's convenient, because, because what's happened is, you know, we didn't, you know, for so long, we didn't even know who was using, because we didn't hear any complaints for such a long time. I thought people were using it. But we do need to come up with a better solution, and I think that at the staff level, we've exhausted what we can do, and we need to kind of look at some next steps as far as our partnership with the city. Because they, they are separate items-
Sure.
But they are somewhat related as far as just the lack of parking and how creative we have got.
I would welcome the opportunity to be a part of those conversations as well.
So I, I want to say thank you to the board. I completely agree with everything that has been said by the members of the board, but I, I just want to, I do have a question for the city, and then maybe Mr. Allen can weigh in. So when we look at the agenda item and we talk about staff parking around Beverly Vista, and that they're getting ticketed, I realize that that is our responsibility to address. My question is, and I, I'm sorry I'm not well, I mean, I do understand Mr. Spitz's point made about residents take precedence in, you know, their city and their, their streets and parking. My question for the city is, because it is a school district, I mean, a school site, you know, there's a school site within a parameter of those streets, I wonder, have you looked at parking enforcement to be slightly different, because you would consider a school site being in that area? In other words, other cities designate areas where there's school sites, and they alter their parking restrictions within a radius, they determine that. And it seems like the way this is being taken care of is, you know, one-size-fits-all, meaning, I know there's parking restrictions where I live, and it's uniform across that whole area, and I understand that, but there's no school site within, I mean, there is a school site across the street, north of Wilshire, south of Wilshire, but it's different, it doesn't impact the north side of it. So I wonder, have, have, have you as staff, when you recommend to your, to the Parking Commission, did you consider that at all, or was that just not something that we would even entertain? And if so, why?
Yes, we do look at everything that's around us. It's not just a street block, it's a neighborhood, it's a community of what we're looking at and the impacts. In addition to evaluating the project area, which is the, the block, we also do counts around. As far as establishing a regulation, we want to keep the consistency, because then that sends mixed messages of, if I park here, I parked here for an hour at 8:00 AM, and that's been okay, and they come back and, or for a longer period of time, it's confusion for the general public to have multiple parking. For example, when street sweeping, you know, if you don't read the street sweeping or the peak hour gridlock, that's confusing, and, and, you know, that leads to more questions about-
Right, but we're trying to resolve an issue, obviously.
Right.
I mean, as Dr. Breggy stated, you know, we've kind of exhausted some of the options that staff has dealt with, staff to staff. So my question is, is there something, is there a possibility, perhaps? Has anyone, has a recommendation ever been to, look, let's alter, maybe, for example, I'll throw something creative at you, parking permits for not 35 members of staff at Beverly Vista, but let's say you took seven blocks and you gave five permits that were distinctive, that were different from residential parking, but that allowed staff, that would allow staff to park from 8:00 to, let's say, if their cafeteria works, I don't know the times of, you know, 8:00 to 3:00.
So, a few years ago, and I believe, Mr. Allen was part of the conversation for El Rodeo. That was the same conversation we had, or challenge we had, I want to say at least five or seven years ago, where there was a proposal that was to, you know, spread out by different blocks, the, the overage of on-street parking by the school. We did review that, it did go to Traffic and Parking, it did go to the city council, and that was not moved forward, okay? Because where would you designate the parking? And then the residents would be, they're parking in front of my house all the time. So that, that, we did have that discussion a few years ago, so I mean-
I guess I do understand what you're saying. I, what I, what I'm asking, I guess what I'm challenging you with is to, to, the question is this, you know, if you have a school within a neighborhood, you know that there's a school there, and you know that the, the parking, the needs of the parking are going to be a little different and challenging, just simply because you have staff coming and going. And I know that this is not your problem, this is our problem to solve, but in the, in the interim, it just seems that that would be an easy solution, so that we don't have our custodians, our maintenance, and our, you know, our, the workers who come here, as Mr. Allen said, you know, they're coming and they're paying to come to work, and it seems very unfair. And I, I do understand that this is our priority, and I, and I really do believe the staff has been working endlessly to resolve this. I think we just need a matter of time, is there's a timetable here, there's an opportunity, I think, to, to fix this with some solutions. Mr. Allen, I can see you want to say something.
I do, just for just a second.
Please.
Do you know, I don't mean to, to sound preachy or anything else, I don't, I don't really want to be there, but I, but I do want to say this. We talk about community. Children are an important part of a community. When I look at our city council and our school board, many of our civic leaders in this community are products of our schools. We are talking about how we are taking care of the future of this city, because many of these kids stay right here in this community and become part of the civic infrastructure. And we know that students are successful when their parents are engaged in their education. And so by allowing our parents to park in our communities, and we're not importing these parents or these kids, they are Beverly Hills citizens of this community. We strengthen our schools, because their parents are actively engaged in the student learning process, so by providing the parents a place to park and come to meetings and be engaged in that school, we strengthen those kids, which then strengthens our city. Our city as a community is churches and schools and kids and businesses. And I just think it's really important that we not just boil this down to where a vehicle is parking on a street, but we remember the whole reason that I'm standing here, and that we're all here, and that is to serve and take care of kids. That cafeteria lady isn't just paying to come to work, she's paying to come and serve food to our children, to actually hand them a plate of food for their lunch. It's not just work, she's serving them. And so it's about kids. It's about how we as a community, as a city, and as a district come together to take care of our most valuable asset, and it's not a shop, it's our kids. And I'm just, that's, I'm just going to leave with that, it's so important that we don't lose sight of that, that those teachers, these staff members, they're here to take care of and serve children. And that's, that's, we need to remember that.
Thank you, Mr. Allen, for that. So I guess, where do we go from here, Dr. Breggy? Are you, when do you think the city council will be taking this issue up, based on the recommendation that the Traffic and Parking Commission has now?
So we tend, we tentatively have this on the agenda for the March 31st meeting. Depending on what's on the agenda, because this will be new, and new, new business, it is at the end, you know, after all the consent items, after the public hearings, so if there are, you know, significant items on that day, we would propose having it on April 21st, okay? So as of right now, we are looking at the 31st pending the, the agenda, the composition of the agenda right now.
Great, thank you.
So the April 6th is the installation, so we won't have any items on that day.
Is there any way we can get this result, get this on the agenda sooner than that?
No.
You couldn't?
We have a public comment, yeah.
Nothing's going to happen between now and-
No, but we could probably get-
Well, we have the election, there aren't, we don't have a meeting on that day, so we do, the earliest is the 31st of March.
Thank you.
And as always, we do provide public comment or, or public noticing, and we will make sure that our school teammates have that, so that it can be distributed to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Thank you. We will now move on to item, discussion of staff parking. Did we already do that one? No, yes, D, I'm sorry. Petition the city residents in the 200 block of South Crescent Drive to change the parking restrictions on their street from one-hour permit, parking only.
So, I mean, I think we, we've kind of intermixed both issues, so I don't know if there's anything else the, the board would like to say about that. You know, they're separate, but they're, they're together. I mean, it's, it's, it's lack of parking that's impacting, you know, our school district. impacting, you know, our school district.
Mr. Margot? I'm sorry, Mr. Recupera. Mr. Margot?
I don't want to keep beating this horse, but the, I respect the residents' rights to conduct that, especially in light of how certain people have a loose relationship with the rules in this town. I would also think, though, that knowing what we're struggling through in our, with our middle school and parking situation, the community could be a little more forgiving during this period until we get a long-term solution in place. Leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Spitz?
Nothing?
Any comments, Mr. Spitz?
Well, I think we have the responsibility to come up with a short-term solution, an immediate short-term solution. That's our responsibility. And I would be in favor, and there would be, there's going to be a cost to it. There's no question about that. But we have a problem, and the problem has to be solved. And I see it as a shuttle service to and from, and shuttle service be available all day long, if necessary, to and from an area such as the parking under the tennis courts on La Cienega, where there's plenty of it, plenty of places, I think, and, and solve the problem temporarily, quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz.
I have an anecdotal story, and I'm going to try and make it quick because I think it's relevant. I pulled up to my mom's house one day, and she lives on South Rodeo, 200 block, same block that we're talking about on Crescent. And in front of her house was like an RV. And I knew it wasn't ours, and I know, like a lot of residents, that my mom has the feeling that that is this parking space in front of my house, and I get to decide who parks there. And I had this sense, getting out of the car, I knew that this was going to be an issue, and I walked up and I see her talking to the driver of the RV. And I thought, oh, goodness, how is this going to sort itself out? As it turns out, they had a lot in common. They became fast friends, and my mom actually handed her restricting, her restriction permit for the C sticker to the man parking his RV in front of her house and said, "I'll see you when you get back. Maybe we'll have tea." So, I think it might go a long way for the school administration to knock on some doors of the residents on Crescent and introduce themselves and say, "Hi, this is who I am. Thank you so much for tolerating the increased traffic on your street." Get to know them a little bit, because it may surprise you that some of the residents may say, "You know what? I'm okay with you parking here for more hours of the day." When they realize it's a staff member and they know that there's a time that that may be over, they may be more open to it. So, my suggestion is, barring all other things that we've talked about already tonight, reach out and make it personal and see if, if the residents on this street will be, at least between now and the meeting on, at the end of March for city council, see if they'd be more open to creating a relationship with the staff at Beverly Vista. And that, and part of that has to go along with being very respectful of the residents, and it also, again, has to go messaging out to our parents that they need to follow the parking restrictions on that street. We're talking a very different thing about staff versus our parent population. We have a lot of cutout space in that carpool area in front of BV and on the north side and the south side of the block. So, parents coming for meetings, I don't think that should be an issue. If our staff can park off-site and those spots are for the parents, there shouldn't be a conflict with parking for those times of the day for parents.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus.
No, I have nothing further to add. I think that it's been pretty well discussed between the item number C and this, so I think that we just need to, I agree with what Ms. Schuman said, though. I like the idea of maybe making some friends and, you know, and seeing if you can maybe park in front of, and they have a permit or something and you can, they can let you park there on occasion. It doesn't hurt to develop a relationship. And I don't think that these people would be that upset if you were to reach out, maybe just for a temporary thing.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. I would agree with everything that has been said. Mr. Dr. Bregge, do you have anything else?
So, I'm just wondering with the permit, is it, is it a, is it a permanent permit, or is it something that has to be updated daily?
Well, I think, I think the answer has been that there is nothing in place right now, correct?
No, there's an existing permit. That whole quadrant is basically--
Oh, you're talking--
Permit Zone Q. It's existing. This was established--
Well, here's my question, is if we did like an adopt a staff member, you know, in front of your house, and, and we did, you know, and residents would then, you know, because there's so many residents, we're so fortunate to have so many people supportive. So, if that idea worked, is, I'm just wondering, what does that permit look like? Is it a daily permit that needs, you have, you know, we'd have to knock on doors every day to get a permit? Or is it a permanent fixture that that staff member would always have in their car?
It's a hang tag. So, the permit zone is a hang tag. It's valid from October 1st through September 30th every year. There's a whole renewal process.
How many residents, how many do they get?
Residents are allowed to purchase up to three permits.
And they purchase them?
Mm-hmm. Right.
So, we could offer, if there's houses that only have one or two, we could offer to pay for the third if they'd be willing to allow--
So, I would be to go back to the municipal code to make sure that we, there's no, nothing being violated as far as the municipal code and how that's--
Transfer.
--established, okay? So--
But aren't there also daytime exemptions? You can go online and request daytime exemptions if you have more spaces that you need.
A resident can purchase or request a daytime exemption. There needs to be, the resident who is calling in must have purchased all three permits. And I think right now the permits are $35 each. So, they have to have purchased all three, and then they can ask for exemptions.
Okay.
Someone has a book club. They're going to have six or seven people come to their house during the day, and they want permits, and they live there. Are you saying they have to pay $35 for each permit for someone to come to their house?
No, the exemption. So, there's the permit, okay? So, the, those are permanent. They're hang tags, and, yes, you have to have, at least, you must purchase the three, and then anyone be, you know, if you need excess, then you call in for a daytime exemption. Those are free.
Can I, I just want to add, are we going to give direction on the idea of the parking lifts and to revisit that? Because you had brought that up.
I think Dr. Bregge is going to go back and come back to us with some, you have a meeting, right, or?
So, I mean, we'll be able to come back with some information about, you know, the shuttling as an idea. I'll also work with Mr. Allen just on the, you know, adopt a staff member initiative, but also with the lifts, is just if we could go visit a lift in action, I'd like to see it.
Okay. I'm on two websites right now, and it's about $6,500 per lift. So, if it's 35 spaces you need, it's going to be about $210,000, but they might give a bulk discount at that point. But I don't know, I don't know if, I don't know if it's even viable and what the code is.
Right, right.
But they do exist. They are pretty compact. They would fit within the parking spaces that we have. It's a, it's a possible solution. It's a possible great short-term solution until we have plans and can redevelop that property.
Again, if we could see it in action, that'd be a good field trip just to watch people do it. No, I understand, but, but I, I want to see people do it, because I see people struggle getting into a parking spot, let alone a lift.
The other thing is, like the trailers, they can be moved. So, if we end up, you know, developing a solution for building a parking, an actual structure at Beverly Vista in that spot, we can relocate them to the high school or to the district office or to another school if need be. So, it's not just a temporary use.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you very much. And rest assured, we will keep our communications open with Ms. Starkins and Dr. Bregge, and make sure that you know about the actual, the final date, the confirmed date for the city council review.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Martha. Thank you, Lieutenant Trejo. We love working with you guys.
So, moving on, we're going to now go to the selection of candidates for California School Boards Association.
I will move to the selection of the candidates for the California School Boards Association and CSBA delegate assembly.
I will move that. Yes, I think we, we have the sheet somewhere with all the candidates. Yes, did someone second? Did someone second? I'm sorry, the--
I seconded.
I didn't hear that. I'm sorry, Ms. Marcus, hold on, please. Let me, I just wanted to explain that, does everyone have their sheet? Great. Okay, thank you. Yes, Ms. Marcus?
Five of the six people are already there, asking to be revoted in, and the only one that wasn't was Jeremy Gerson. And it says to vote for no more than six candidates, and since six candidates are there, I suggest that we approve them all and pass this on.
Okay, I agree with that. Any objections to that?
No.
No? Okay. Any other further discussion?
No, but we should amend the motion to just be approve the slate as presented.
Okay, who, Mrs. Marcus, do you want to amend?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, and Mrs. Marcus--
I amend my second.
Ms. Walker, she accepts, and so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or, okay, motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Moving on to discussion of, what is this, coffees? Mrs. Walker Schuman wanted this on the agenda. And Mr. Margot, so I defer to you. So, oh, go ahead, you start.
Thank you. No, I just was going to say, so as a, when you first took office as president, Mrs. Hacker, you had mentioned that some of the things you were thinking of doing were having coffees and getting some eyes over at the school sites, and we were going to come back and as a board discuss that, and we hadn't had the chance to do that. So, I'm glad this is finally on the agenda. I will say that, I have a little thing prepared here, so I'll just read that and then shut my mouth. We like to use the expression that it's a free country, so I want to preface this by saying that anybody can do what they want in this regard. There's nothing illegal at all going on. However, holding weekly or regular meetings, one-on-one with the public to discuss district issues, really contradicts what we are trying to build here, or at least I thought we're trying to build here. We have a link on our webpage instructing stakeholders on the best ways to address issues within our schools. We have teachers and administrators who want to hear directly from students and parents, not from board members. And we have Ed Code 35145.5, which dictates that every agenda for regular meetings provides an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the board on any item of interest to the public before or during the board's consideration of the item. I know that one-on-one, we talk to people all the time about district issues, and that's fine, and I support that. But publicize coffees with possible, with a possible incumbent to discuss the school district during an election year just seems like campaigning. I did agree with the proposal of having two board members tour our sites with the superintendent, and still would like to do that. We have invested a lot into our district, and it's paramount to see the investment is paying off. As far as the coffees, though, I cannot condone them at this time. Thank you.
So, I agree with Mr. Margot's perspective. I also share concerns that, especially in an election year, there are concerning optics. I think there are ways to be more accessible and that I, I tried to hold on to what it was that you had said that you wanted to achieve by doing these coffees, and it was to make the board more accessible. And I don't necessarily think that that's a bad thing or a good thing. I think, actually, we're all quite accessible, always present at different games and performances and things, PTA meetings and coffees with Kevin and the like. However, if it is something that you have an interest in pursuing, I would suggest that there's a proper way to do it where it's district sanctioned and the entire district gets behind it. I was able to find from a school district that I completed the Masters in Governance program with the superintendent and a couple of the board members, Burton School District, and they have a hosted first Friday coffee. The whole school district sponsors it. The Chamber of Commerce actually hosted it at a theater that accommodated over 100 people. And it was on a Friday morning from 7:00 to 8:15. And they also had a specific agenda that they came, two school board members that were High School Pathways and College Credits Program, and they kept the discussion and the presentation to those two topics, and would answer questions from, you know, whoever attended. I think it's really important, particularly in an election year, that if we're going to do something like this, it's something that the whole district is behind, meaning the whole board, and that there's a rotation, not just the president with a rotating board member, but two different board members each time, to discuss a prescribed, agreed-upon agenda for these different meetings. And so, that, that really is how I feel about it. I think, you know, particularly now, it's timely. Who do we see having coffees every week? Right now, we see candidates that are running for city council having these coffees every week. And so, this, I agree with Mr. Margot that it, the optics of it aren't good. And I also agree with our CSBA rep and the perspective and position that CSBA has maintained, that it is not good governance and it is not best practices to have one member of the school board hosting regular coffees for discussions like this to take place. I think it's very confusing for our PTAs when they're, I don't want to say asked, but when it's suggested for them to include information about coffees in their weekly blasts to classrooms and in their newsletter that comes every week. I think that it gets very dicey, and it puts a lot of people in a compromising situation where they're not really sure what they should do or who it shows loyalty to.
Yeah, I just want to correct for the record that if you're insinuating that I've asked, that is--
I'm not saying--
I have never asked a PTA to do anything, so I want to clarify that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that you have. I'm saying that it has been, I mean, this, this literally just happened last week where the PTAs were, or whatever group in the PTA had been told that they should include this in their blast. I don't know where it came from. Maybe it was just a parent who wanted to come have a conversation with you. But that really crosses over into PTAs endorsing a specific candidate, promoting a certain candidate and an event that's not yet sanctioned by the entire district or the entire board. So, I suggest that if this is something that you'd like to pursue, that we agree in a way to go about it that conforms to a more organized event that has specific topics to discuss at selected intervals where all of the board members can participate in selecting those topics and discussing them with the public.
Mr. Spitz?
Well, I was, I was very surprised, frankly, to see this item on the agenda. I will, and I have listened carefully, by the way, as I always try to do, to Mr. Margot and to Mrs. Walker Schuman. I have a different point of view, and I'll tell you why. Each one of us is here representing the community. We're representatives of the community. And as long as I've been on the school board, members of the school board have been encouraged, encouraged to talk however they can, to get feedback from the community. I, as far as I'm concerned, if each of the five of us wanted to have coffees, not every Monday or something like that, but whenever they wanted to, if each of the five of us, and then we get feedback, and we, if there's something worth bringing to the board's attention, do it that way. But, and, and another thing, I know that some of us, not me, because I'm, I'm just not into that, but some of us use social media all the time to communicate with, with the community, and not only, not only for input, but to express themselves to the community, use social media. So, if there's something wrong with a single board member arranging, offering to, to get feedback, to have a coffee and get feedback, if, if there's something wrong with that, I certainly think there's something wrong with individual board members using social media instead of all five of us together using social media. I just don't understand this. I mean, I'm, I'm surprised. Frankly, if I were a little less lazy, I would have some coffees and meet with, with the residents of the community. I just don't think there should be any restriction whatsoever on any of us meeting with community members at any time. That's the way I feel about it. And I feel very, very strongly that if we're going to put the kibosh on us meeting, meeting with community members individually, then I think we should put the kibosh on any of us using social media for the same purpose.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Spitz. Mrs. Marcus?
Well, Mr. Spitz, I don't know that you're running for office, and I don't think that I had any thought that this coffee had anything to do with anybody running for office. I have to start out by saying that. That never even entered my mind when--
I don't know. I may run for reelection.
Okay. Are you having a-- Are you having your, well, let me get back to what I'm going to say. First of all, when the idea of having coffees was first broached by Mrs. Hacker as something that she was considering to do when she became the president of the school board, I was with her when she came to Dr. Breggie and said something about it, and I had not even heard of it, and I thought that was a pretty good idea. But at the same time, she said, when she was going to do it, that she would not always be just alone, she would take different members of the board with her, so that there would be at least two people to go with her to these meetings or that, when she would have the coffee. So I do remember distinctly, I mean, I haven't been able to go with her because of certain issues with my health.
I've only gone once, Mrs. Marcus. I've only had one.
Okay. Well, I know that you did mention that you were going to take other people on the board with you, so that it would not be just you alone. I personally have always felt the very strong connection with the members of my community. When people reach out to me, I enjoy discussing things with them. I love the ability to speak my mind, but now that I'm on the board, I do know that I have certain limitations that I cannot do, and I, I take that very seriously. As you know, I am not a social media person. I do not go on Facebook. I don't even open up, my kids make fun of me, but I don't do that. I, I like to have conversations with people one-on-one. I, I recall that the mayor has had situations where they were running coffees, Meet the Mayor, the police chief has had coffee with the cops, even Mr. Allen has made coffee with Mr. Allen. All of these are designed just to get out ideas, to talk about things and what have you. If, if, if it's a threat, I don't feel that it's a threat. I don't think of it as running for office or being campaigning in any way, shape, or form, but then, of course, I have three more years to go, and so I don't have to think about that, but that didn't even cross my mind. So, I, I don't know that I would be opposed to doing these. I think that it's a way of communicating with, and being open, and having people come and give you their ideas, and speaking with the public if they show desire. And they have a right to come or not to come if they don't want to discuss something. So, I see nothing wrong with the coffees. I think it would be good to have two people there, because that way would be much easier if there's any question about anything, but that's my take on it.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. So I want to clarify a few things, because a lot of things have been said, and I think it's important to have some perspective as to how this all evolved. So somewhere around late November, I met with Dr. Breggie, and I invited Mrs. Marcus, as she has just said, to a meeting. In that meeting, I went in with a proposal for some of the goals that I had thought about achieving in this next year. So one of the goals, I, I underlined it or highlighted it as an activity goal, and the plan was to have coffees. And as Mrs., and, and of course, I discussed this with Vice President Marcus and Breggie. And initially, my, when I approached Dr. Breggie about this, was to have these coffees at each school. And the purpose for that was to strengthen board and superintendent presence and transparency with the community. So during our meeting, however, the conversation evolved, and it led us to consider the possibility of rotating these coffees with different members of this board. And Dr. Breggie, you can correct me if I'm saying anything that is not in line with the proposal, because I literally took this out of what I proposed to him in our meeting. So, Dr. Breggie, I want to say, seemed very enthusiastic about this opportunity, as Mrs. Marcus and I were. Dr. Breggie asked if I would be willing to share this proposal with the board through his Board Connection communication, and of course, I agreed. So I want to stipulate that I was so transparent that I, I said, yes, please take the, take this document that I brought, which was just really for my internal purposes of keeping our meeting very cohesive, and he shared it. Is that not right?
It was shared, yes.
Yes. So, a week or two weeks later, I attended CSBA conference in San Diego, and Mrs. Walker Schuman asked me to join her and Deb Dudley, the CSBA representative with Dr. Breggie, for a brief meeting. At that meeting, Deb Dudley explained that Mrs. Walker Schuman had shared the idea of the coffees with, and proceeded to tell me that Dr. Breggie was not to, to do these coffees, because in their view, he had a very specific role to fulfill in his role as superintendent, and that these coffees would perhaps take away from his official responsibilities as mandated by the board. Would you correct, would you say that that was basically in essence what Mrs. Dudley said? She said this would be taking away from, these coffees were not part of your official duty. And so I listened very carefully, and she then encouraged me to go, and she said, Isabel, if you want to do this on your own, you can do this on your own without taking staff's time away from the operation. So, I just said, okay, fine. Mrs. Walker Schuman seemed to be very pleased with that. I mean, she, she didn't have much to say after that. I think she, her message was to convey to me that she had an issue with taking Dr. Breggie away from his role as superintendent, and didn't foresee these coffees as being an official, you know, directive of his position here as superintendent. So I basically went and did exactly that. I only have had one coffee, I had three people come, and I want to reiterate today that when I did attend, when I was at Earth Cafe, Mr. Margot and Mrs. Schuman Walker were there, and I was kind of surprised, and I explained to them that I wasn't comfortable with three board members being there. Mrs. Schuman Walker said she checked it out with CSBA and that it was fine, as long as we all just sat there and listened. It was a little awkward, to say the least, and I do want to say that I, I would not want to be put in that position again, or, you know, where any board member has to share a public coffee with three board members. It just gives the, visually, I think it gives the perception that we are violating the Brown Act, and I know that there's, it touches very, very closely on that, and I'm not comfortable with that, and I don't want to participate in coffees like that. I would appreciate if, if that has to happen again, that, you know, you let me know who wants to come, and I'm happy to share those coffees with you all. I don't think at this moment, there's support just from listening to you, unless there is a change in the board, to have this be something that Dr. Breggie participates in. If, if, if that's the conversation the board wants to have in the future, I'm happy to entertain that. I, I said to Dr. Breggie, I'm sorry you're not coming with me, I think it would have been a great opportunity for us, but I'm not doing it to, you know, it's, it's not political at all. It's just, as Mr. Spitz has said, it's to engage with the community and make ourselves accessible, and I'm happy to share that and rotate those coffees with you all. If you want to, you can email me, and we can, we can plan accordingly. And I think that's enough. I don't want to, anything else.
Well, I think we should have some discussion. We asked for this to be put on, and everyone's had a chance to speak now, so we can all discuss what's been, what's been shared.
I, I don't have anything else to say. Mr. Margot, do you have anything to say?
I was just going to say, in listening to everybody, and I started out by saying, you do have the right to do what you want, and I support that right. I would, if, if we do this moving forward, I, I do support that Dr. Breggie is not involved. He's too busy, and I wouldn't call on him to schedule him to do anything else. And I do support you reaching out to the board every time you schedule one to see which one of us, and only one of us, because I respect the fact that three makes you uncomfortable, and I won't do that again. I was just seeing what it was all about, because we hadn't had a chance to talk about it. So it's, it's, it doesn't have to be as formal and structured as what Ms. Walker Schuman brought to us, but I would like if a board member can join you, so that way there's no...
And that was initially the intent, Mr. Marcus, so I'm happy...
Right. And I like, and I like still doing the tours of the school with the superintendent. I still want to do that. That's, that's a great idea. I, I like that. I just, in, in saying what you were saying, I kind of, I had not, I wrote down that, that we do, for the community and transparency, we are invited to PTA meetings. You always speak, and you welcome questions and concerns from all the parents there. So I think we've had that practice since I've been on the board. So, I, I, your approach is kind of off-site, and I think that's unique and original, but at the same time, I don't think there's ever been a lack of transparency from board members and the school district with the community. I think the problem is, the PTA meetings have the same people that come to all of them, and, and it's the same group asking the questions, so it's, you really don't feel like you're reaching a larger part of the community. What you're proposing hopefully will reach a larger part of the community and people that don't necessarily attend those monthly PTA meetings and get a chance to ask the questions. So like I said, I, I'll support it as long as you invite a board member, and we take turns if we want, and if nobody can make it, that's on us. But if you, if you invite the board member, I, oh...
And you and I spoke, I think, about this in private minutes.
Yeah, we spoke about this. So I appreciate, I'm being open and honest, and that's how I feel. And by the way, when the time comes later in the year, that if, if you do declare candidacy and are an incumbent and do run, you're entitled to do that, by the way. That's your right to do that. I would do it too.
Of course, thank you, Mr. Marcus.
So I do appreciate that. But until that happens, I don't want it to appear that it's happening already.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Spitz?
I didn't realize we were going through again. Did you have other comment?
I just want to make sure. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Spitz.
My piece, I, I don't understand why any of us should be restricted from communicating with people in the community any way we want to, but you can do it on social media.
So I'm not suggesting, okay, well, I'm not suggesting that there's any restriction to communicating with people in the community. We get emails and phone calls and text messages all the time. What I'm suggesting is that having, hosting a coffee for you to answer questions to a specific group of people that could touch on...
I only had three people come. You were there for the first hour.
Right, but you've said you're going to do this every Friday.
No, I didn't. I said, no, I have not. I have not even announced, I have not even announced, no, Mrs., no, I wanted to see how the first one went.
Okay, well, it was...
I haven't made any announcement publicly at all.
It was, it was in the PTA meeting, and it actually should be reflected in the minute.
I said, this Friday, I'm going to be there.
It's going to be every Friday. But...
I didn't have one last Friday, and I'm not looking forward to having one this Friday.
Okay. My point was not to restrict any communication. We're all available to receive communication from any community member that wants to reach out. This, it's for that reason that I don't think this is necessary, but again, if this is something that you want to do, I think there ought to be more organizational structure to it. And I would really like for Deb Dudley to come back, because she very specifically said that Dr. Breggie should be at something like this to make sure that the topics discussed stayed on track. And, and the idea of doing it every Friday would be an encumbrance upon his time. However, once a month would not be an encumbrance on his time. So I would love for Deb Dudley to come back and maybe do a little research in governance.
Tristan, I think that's a little overkill.
Mrs. Marcus, I'm going to move on. I'm, I'm, this is really embarrassing.
I had thought, and since I was going to say something, and I lost the train of thought. I had something on this that I was going to say, and now I've lost it because...
But your comeback has been fabulous tonight.
Yes, it has.
Your comeback tonight has been fabulous. I got to give you props. You're, you've sat it out the whole time, closed, open, not, not even wincing. You're not even wincing.
Dr. Breggie, you want to say anything?
I am a tough lady.
I know. Mel and I were a little scared of you earlier. I'm just saying.
Okay. Dr. Breggie, you have anything to say? You don't have to.
I mean, I would prefer to talk about parking at CBMS.
Yes, because you are on the schedule right now. Yes, you are.
So, I mean, you know, about 80% of my job is operations, and that's, that's tough. So, so anytime there is an opportunity for me to get out of some of these meetings, I do get excited about it, and that's why I, I tend just about everything. Four or five nights a week, I'm actually at events, because I do get excited about that, because I, I struggle to even get into our own schools because of the amount of meetings that I'm in. I'm happy to share my calendar with you. It's, it's about 80% of my job is, is focused on operations. So, by saying that, that's, I do get excited about that, but it's, our job is to support the board in any way that you see fit. I know as an organization, as a cabinet, and also as a larger leadership team with principals and assistant principals and directors, we have some pretty tough conversations, just like this one, and we do talk about norms and protocols, and, you know, we don't always agree, and we do it every year. And, but we do have it out, and then we come up with our norms, and then, and then for the rest of the year, we, we follow those. So, we're, we're ready to support the board in, in any way that, that you see fit, but it would be, it would be really difficult, you know, because, you know, I report to you.
So I think that we're going to, I'd like to go back to that proposal of visiting schools like Mr., and I know this is slightly off-topic, this has nothing to do with the coffee, since we're not going to be doing coffees, it seems like, at the school sites, but let's bring that up at the next meeting, visiting school sites, or maybe we should have a conversation meeting amongst the board members to talk about, you know, just touring the schools and, you know, seeing what, what is working with reconfiguration as far as, do we need to make any adjustments and have that conversation.
If it will help me get back into our schools, I'm all for it.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. I think that concludes our agenda for tonight. Communication from board members and future board meetings. Mr. Fucubro.
Yeah, I'm not a coffee fan. Maybe in college I will be, but we'll see. Like I said earlier, the boys' basketball team is playing in a playoff game tomorrow at 7:00 PM in the swim gym, so it'd be awesome to see everyone out there to support the team. And happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's Day to you too, Thomas. Thank you. So, earlier we had, so the president of the BHEA speak, and he kept on stressing about that the union is doing what's right for students in Beverly Hills, and it kind of did one of these to me, because the five of us up here, love us or like us, we, we do that every day, and we do it for free. And we give, we give more than normal work week into this job, and all we think about is what's right for students in this city. So I just want to reiterate that. Appreciate my colleagues, whether we agree or disagree, we care more about kids in this city than you can imagine. It's on our mind heavily every day about their learning, their safety, their well-being. So I needed to reiterate that, because I don't like being kind of cornered into a space where we, we're painted that we don't, because we do. The second thing I was going to say was, we just had a marvelous construction update posted on our website. I don't know how we can advertise this, Mr. Starkins, but if you go to the bhusd.org under Departments, Facilities and Construction, and then select Master Plan, you'll see a list with an update of today or an update of yesterday, February 10th. If you, this is open for the public. It was sent to all of us separately, but you can go on it, the public can go on this. And if you go on it, you're getting real-time photos of what's happening at our construction sites. And instead of coming and going through the Jeff Pileman's, you know, two-hour slideshow here, it would be great for you to look at, I love Jeff, it would be great for you to look at it online and see, you want to see where your bond money is going, it's remarkable what is going on inside these buildings that you don't even think about, because the outside still kind of looks the same as it's looked for the last, you know, eight months. But, boy, the pictures that came up this week, am I right, Thomas?
Yeah.
It's cool stuff. We were kind of in awe. It was just, I can't believe, I'm not, I'm not even going to spoil it, but you got to check it out. So I'm just, thank you for Lance and the Facility Department for keeping those available for the public on a regular basis, because it's a great way, once again, to push Mrs. Hacker's agenda of being transparent. So that's, you can't get more transparent than that. Thank you.
Mr. Spitz.
I just want to second what Mr. Margot said about Mr. Smith's presentation. I think Mr. Smith was out of line.
Mrs. Walker Schuman.
Okay. I have some housekeeping and basic fact-checking. I wanted to go back to comments that were made at our last board meeting about Measure Y, about the resolution vote related to Measure Y. That, that bond could have been a $400 million bond. It was known at the time that it was going to take $369 million in order to complete all the projects. Why it is that the board at that time decided not to go forward with that amount and to go with a $260 million bond and said, I don't know, I wasn't there, but I, I believe that there's quite a lot of information that actually supports how that conversation went. I think it's important to go back to the resolution that Mr. Spitz was talking about, that insured K8 model for a period of time. That was a 5-0 vote. That was not a 3-2 vote. So let's just be clear about what it is that we're saying, and let's be factual about what it is that we're saying. I still agree that right action took place. I still agree that that particular bond measure was not in the best interest of the district, but how it became what it became should not be rewritten in history. In terms of summer school that we discussed two weeks ago at our last board meeting, La Canyana Flint Ridge school year ends on June 3rd. Their summer school starts June 15th. That's a full week in between the end of school and the beginning of the next, the summer program. I've had many emails, actually, from students saying that they agree that the kids need a break between the end of the full school year and the beginning of a summer school program. So like I usually do, I'm going to recommend a survey. I think we need to get answers from our families and from our students, and find out what is actually their desire when we're talking about how to set up the dates for our summer school program. school program. And that about covers my updates and fact-checking. Oh, one more thing. There is a weekly update that was sent out last week, and it was for the Hawthorne School District. It was, not School District, but Hawthorne School, and it includes the meeting with Isabel Hacker, president of the Board of Education, will be meeting with parents about important issues on a weekly basis, every Friday, 8 to 10, Earth Cafe. So it was every week.
So Mrs., you know, I don't even know how that got on there, and I will, you know, I'm hoping that the Hawthorne people are looking, because I did not have anything to do with that announcement at all. I didn't even see that.
I'm not saying you do. I'm just saying this must be why I remembered.
No, but the insinuation is well-taken. The insinuation is very well-taken.
This is why I remembered that it was supposed to be weekly.
Thank you. So I just want to, you know, I really don't like the attack on my integrity. I have not talked to anyone at the Hawthorne PTA about these announcements. I didn't make any request. I think that is obviously a mistake, that they've misquoted my times, and I don't appreciate the attack, Mrs. Schuman Walker, but it's duly noted. Thank you.
So is what it says. It's black and white.
Right. I think we have bigger issues in this district. It's really unfortunate. This has become the center of focus of our meeting today and our comments. So for Measure Y, let me just stipulate, because not everybody at this dais was at those meetings. Mr. Spitz and I voted against Measure Y, but in that same meeting, if you watch the tape, and I can't remember if it was Mr. Spitz who, I think it was I, who said that I would not get involved in any tactics jeopardizing or being any type of opposition to the bond, campaigning against it, and Mr. Spitz agreed with me. So the following week, therefore, or maybe, not the following week, a month later, or maybe two weeks later, this resolution appeared. So we voted for it, not because we liked it, but because we understood that there was language in that resolution that was tied to the passing of Measure Y. To vote against it would be to go back on my word, and I think that, I don't want to speak for Mr. Spitz, but I assume that he also voted for it, because he also made a pledge, a verbal pledge here in public, that we would not oppose or campaign against Measure Y. So basically, in essence, the resolution that passed 5-0 was to basically stipulate to the voters of Beverly Hills Unified, that if Measure Y passed, that we would continue to have a K-8 structure intact. And I was not going to campaign against Measure Y, and by, again, as I just said, not to go back on my word, I said, fine, if this passes, this is what the voters want, this is what they've been promised, so be it. Fortunately, it didn't pass. Fortunately, we were able to have a middle school, and fortunately, we were able to get Measure BH. Okay. Also, I want to clarify something. Last week, I referenced a training or assembly that occurred at Hawthorne. I want to clarify that my comments were not at all meant to reference Hawthorne's HERO Program, but rather, the assembly that I used as an example was raised to ask if students were making the connection between the acronym PBIS and, again, not the HERO Program. So I hope this clarifies any misunderstanding. I do know that the staff at Hawthorne is working tirelessly to promote the HERO Program. I always, the reason I asked that question, and I think Mrs. Chisholm understands my point of view, is I, as a board member, when we see or are asked to support PBIS, I always often wonder, how much do the kids know? How much are they actually making that connection? So that was the point, that was the purpose for my asking, so I wanted to clarify that. Yes, please, Mrs. Chisholm.
I understood what you were asking. Also, the HERO Program is part of PBIS, as you said, and Hawthorne was one of the first schools to roll it out, and so they've done it in increments, and it may have gotten to the later grades a little...
Oh, and I wasn't insinuating that. Just the acronym PBIS.
Yeah.
How much, how are students really making the connection?
The connection. Right. And so they're using HERO at Hawthorne for them. Yes. So I understood your question, though.
I know that, because I've been at those assemblies, and I know that they've been going on. Thank you.
Mrs. Marcus, did I skip you? I am so sorry. I am so sorry, Mrs. Marcus. Will you forgive me?
I just am glad to be back, and I'll try to stay on my two feet, or either that or get wrapped in bubble, bubble-wrapped, so that I can protect myself, because it appears that my bones are pretty frail.
Mrs. Hacker, can I just say one more thing? I attended, I'm sorry, I was going to make this during my comments, I attended the Los Angeles County School Trustee Association Dinner last month, my first one in eight years. I'm very excited about it.
Thank you for doing that for us.
There's only four of them per year, and they had a wonderful speaker, Pedro Noguera, who is a professor at UCLA, head of the department, I think, there, who spoke about implicit bias. And I'll bring that back, but it was actually a terrific evening, and a great conversation, and I sat with some wonderful people, from board members from Downey and from Temple City. And it was just a very productive night, and I look forward to the next one. And I'm not going to ask for the $25 back from the district.
Thank you. Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Are you still on the way?
I have, I have.
Right?
I don't have, yeah, I have, I have, I have terrible...
Yes, Mr. Marcus.
That's the same one that I was having on. He didn't have a dish. I had, I just wanted to...
Oh.
And then I got the seventy-two pound. So there, we just, um, something... I have another one. I have a... I have a... I didn't have all these.